People, weird things are happening around here. But thank God, even if everything around us changes, our Lord never changes. So let's sing, let's sing together of His entailing and unchanging love for us. Great is Your love, let the worlders see, let the worlders see. You reached for us from on heaven's throne when we had no hope. You are the way, there is no other. You are the way, there is no other. You rose from death to victory. You reign in life, oh majesty. Your name is higher than lifting up, Jesus, Jesus alive in us. The outshine this time, you are glorious, don't care, you are glorious. Lord of all, Lord of all. You have made us new, we owe it all to you. In everything. In everything, be exalted. In everything, be exalted. For you rose from death to victory, to victory. You reign, you reign in life, in love, oh majesty, majesty. Your name is great, is great and lifted up, yeah, Jesus, Jesus alive in us. The enemy is under my feet, the enemy is under our feet. We are free, we are free. Death has been defeated by love, you overcome, you overcome. The enemy, the enemy is under your feet. We are free, we are free. Oh, love of God, oh, death has been defeated by love, you overcome, so I overcome. Cause you rose from death to victory. You reign in life, oh majesty. Your name is higher than lifting up, yeah, Jesus, Jesus. Yeah, Jesus, Jesus. Yeah, Jesus, Jesus. And you're alive in me. Oh, hallelujah, thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord, amen. Well, hello. Hi, everybody, welcome, welcome to session number two of our study. How do you take that echo off? No, the echo. Yes. Study about faith. And we started yesterday to, with our, the faith that can move mountains. And we actually, anytime you open the Word and look what the Word says, you're studying faith. Because you're studying the foundation of, of your life, the foundation that you're standing upon. So, um. Let's go today, but before that, I want to encourage you to actually subscribe to the, to our channel. Comments, leave a comment, like, share. Actually, I'm on Facebook right now and I'm going to share our link. And I encourage you to do this, as I do it, go to our Abundant Life Fellowship page or Rock Springs Worship Center, Facebook page, and share that link on your page. And I'm doing it right now. Okay. Share. Come on. Okay, I write a post, I'm gonna say, we are live right now. So do it as I do it, like and subscribe, because it allows us to, to touch more people. If they know we're live right now. Ta-da, done. So when people see those Bible studies, even if they're not at first interested, or they think it's not for them, after seeing it twice, thrice, four times, five times, they're gonna be intrigued and they, they will end up clicking on it. And they will, we will, we will reach these people, thanks to you and me, just going public with, with these kind of things and say, saying, hey, I'm watching that. Hey, I'm studying my Bible. Hey, I'm believing God. You know, so I encourage you to do that, to click the notification bell on our YouTube channel, so you know every time that we are, we go live. And also remember for Bible study and for our services, send us your prayer requests, or prayers report, or anything you would like to tell us. Make sure you send that ahead of time, so we have time to pass the message on to whoever is ministering that day. Because we don't wanna miss, we don't wanna miss helping you or sharing the good news that, that you give us through your praise reports, right? So yesterday, we talked about, it was an introduction on mountain-moving faith. And we saw that every one of us have been given a measure of faith. And today, we're gonna see what we do with that measure of faith. And I have a good news for you. It is, it has the potential to be ever increasing. So let's open our Bible on Romans 12, verse three. We're just gonna do a quick recap on that. Romans 12, verse three, and it says, "For I say through the grace given to me to everyone who is among you, not to think of himself more highly than he ought to think, but to think soberly, as God has dealt to each one measure of faith." So we see that no man is without faith. We all have a measure of faith. That's the faith we use when we believe in Him for salvation. And that's His gift. Then, well, again, what we do with it. You have so many people that don't use that measure of faith to believe in God for salvation. They refuse to use their faith. Well, once we're born again, it's still the same rules that apply. If we refuse to use our faith, or if we don't know that we can use our faith, or if we don't know how to do it, then it can't increase. But I have a good news you're watching today. So you are already using your faith and you are learning how to use it even better. Let's go to Ephesians 2, verse eight, where it says, "For by grace are you saved through faith, and that not of yourselves; it is the gift of God." So see, being saved. Grace and faith, they are the gift of God, they are one package, they are all the gift of God. He's given you faith, you have faith, my friends, you have faith. Because the Lord of the universe, the, the God who created you, He created you that way. Just like for any models of car, there is a specific thing about that car, right? It comes that way out of the factory. You came that way out of the factory. You came with a measure of faith. And let's look at Romans 10, verse 17. So we say that's the gift of God, that's one package. And we're gonna see some more of that gift. Romans 10, verse 17, it says, "So faith comes by hearing." That's the gift of God, it comes to you, it comes to you. As you, He made you that way, and then as you hear more of His word, every time it sparkles that faith, it's like, just like that car, it triggers that option in your car, it triggers it. You know, some cars, they have the, you can choose economy driving, sports driving, you know, the drive modes. You can choose four, four, how do you say, four-wheel drive, four-wheel drive? But you have to activate that thing, right? You, if you, if you just get in and start driving, it's gonna be stuck in the same mode it was when you got in the car. You have to activate that mode to benefit from it. Well, faith comes by hearing, and hearing, and hearing, and hearing the word of God. So, um, let's look at second, I'm, I have to go quick through the verses, so I'm sorry, 2 Corinthians 4:13. Because we have so many good things today, I don't want, I don't want you to miss anything, right? So I will go quickly, these verses, we, we saw them yesterday anyway, but 2 Corinthians 4, verse 13, says, "We," and since we have the, what do you read in your Bible? What do you read on that screen? Since we have the same spirit of faith, according to what is written, "I believed and therefore I spoke." We also believe and therefore we speak. So two things here, first of all, we do, you do have that same spirit of faith in you. That's number one lesson from that verse. Number two, you do something with it, therefore. You know, if, if there is therefore, you have to find why it's therefore. And it's there to tell you that once you have something, you have to do something with it. You have to do what that thing was intended to do. You speak it, you speak, we saw that yesterday as well. So, you know what? All that, it's been what, 10 minutes have been, I, I started to talk about faith and all we heard was good news. We are not trying to get faith. You are not trying to get faith, no matter what you, maybe you've heard growing up. Or you, you started thinking, I don't have faith, I need, I need faith, I have to ask for faith. Whatever, however this thought came through your mind, you can tell by the word, it is not scriptural. What is in the scriptures is, you do have it, good news, you have it, and it is yours, it's the gift of God. You didn't steal it, you didn't have to bargain for, for it, you didn't borrow it and you'll, you'll have to give it back later. It is yours because it's your making, it is who you are. But you also have one responsibility, therefore. Because you do have the same spirit of faith, you have to use it, you have to use it. So from these verse, from this verse, that, that one, we can see that we do have the same spirit of faith that Jesus talked about in Mark 11:23. So that same spirit of faith, it's not just the hope of something, or a little thing, or, it's the one He was talking about in Mark 11, 22 through 24. The same spirit of faith that is able to move mountains in your life. You have the same one. So you might say, yeah, well, no, I've tried that, it does not work, your faith thing doesn't work, Pastor Quinell. Well, yes, it does, it's not because your experience didn't match the word, that the word is wrong. If you, if we put my experience, your experience, and every people on earth's experience against the word, the word will still stand true. Because the word can't lie, the word can't make mistake, the word doesn't go by their, by its emotions or, or thoughts, it's not deceived. We are being deceived, we are being, we're, um. People can make us think that we're smaller than we truly are, that we are weaker than we truly are, that we don't have what we really have. People, we make mistake, we don't put our trust in the right things. As a result, we have different results that what the word intended for us to have. But it doesn't make the word wrong. It makes our experiences the wrong ones, our results, those that were not intended. So if you're fed up with your results, if you're sick and tired of having the wrong results, if you think it's never gonna work, I give up. Very good, you're in a very good position, you give up your ways. Now let's try the word's way, okay? Let's look, I tell you, God is good, He gave you a good thing and He gave you the means to do what He wanted for you to do with these good things He gave you. So let's try that, seriously. And you know, let, let's read what He said in, so you have the, yeah, okay, let's go from, um, the verse 22 through 24. It's important. So Jesus told us, have faith in God. But He didn't, we saw that yesterday, He didn't say just, have faith in God, like, yeah, hope, okay. Okay, just cross your fingers and hope God is gonna do something. No, it's not what He means. He means, and we know this because, first of all, we know the mind of God when we read the whole Bible and we, we see His intent when He speaks. But also studying languages in Greek, it is, it means, have, you have the same faith of God. Go for it, go, have the same faith of God, the faith that God has, have it for yourself. He's putting it in your hand, He says, go for it. Don't cross your fingers and hope God is gonna do something. You do it, what do you do? Verse 23. "You say to this mountain, 'Be removed and cast into the sea,' and you do not doubt in your heart." Why? Because you know what faith does. You know that you're, what you're saying to the mountain is not your own doing, it's because God told you the mountain was not supposed to be there. Just like when Jesus said, "Go across the lake and I'll meet you, I'll meet you on the other side." And then boom, a storm came up. That storm's not supposed to stop me, because God already told me, meet me on the other side. So storm, be removed, be silent. God told me, I will open up the way for you, I will flatten the, the, the ground, I will make those narrow and windy paths, I will make them straight. So what do you do? You line up, you're, you're speaking and God's speaking. That is faith. You speak whether you believe in your heart and you don't doubt, because God already said it, be straight, mountain, be gone. So you just say it. You say, you use that same kind of faith. And you say, "Be removed and cast into the sea." And I have no reason to doubt in my heart, but I believe, I know believing is not hoping, that's the verse 24. Believing is not just hoping, I know we, we, we have changed the meaning of words. And in, in French, for instance, you believe in Santa Claus. You know, like, you think there is a Santa Claus. Or you believe in the tooth fairy, you think there is a tooth fairy. Or when you're not sure about something, this is how you use that word, like, for instance, did, did he really say that? Did Mary really told you that? Oh, I believe so. What does it mean? It means, I'm not sure, I think she did. That's the opposite of the word, of the meaning of the word believe. To believe is to know. That's, that's simple, you know, you know. And it's even deeper than to know, because knowing is based on our experience of our five senses, you know. Oh yeah, I know, I know this chair is black, I know this pulpit is wood, because I see it, I touch it. Believing is, you know, because it goes beyond your natural senses. You know the truth. So you believe that those things you say will be done. And you will have whatever you say. Not because of how great you are, but because God said so, and you lined up your, your speaking on, on what God said. And that's using your faith. Therefore, Jesus keep on, Jesus keep on saying, "I do say unto you, whatever things you ask when you pray, believe that you receive them and you will have them." So see, you ask, you speak, you ask, you speak, that's the thing you have to do with that faith that God gave you. You have to use it, not with a heart of, ooh, I hope it's gonna work. Or not with a heart of defeat. Well, never worked before, why would it change? I'm gonna say, okay, I'm gonna say what you told me to say. I'm gonna say blah, 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 but it's never worked before. No, pick up your heart, pick up your heart, God is good, He is. What He tells you to do, He tells you to do this, because it's the right thing to do and you will have the right result. Pick up your heart, people. And so let's keep on, ongoing, every believer already has the measure of faith that Romans 12:3 tells us about. He doesn't give, God doesn't give more faith to one and, and less faith to another, because that would be unfair. God would be a respecter of person if He did this, but we know, His word says He is not a respecter of person. He gives the same thing, and He is the God that treats us as His dear, dear, dear children. But He sees in us more than weak and capable and babies. We're His children because He loves us, but we're, He treats us, He sees in us the potential that we have, the ability that we have to be grown men and women of God. So He says, "I've given you this, now you take it, you multiply it, you take it, you make it grow, I trust in you." God has faith in us. God has faith in you to do something with the faith He gave you. God's faith is not misplaced. So, um. Your faith grows according to what you do with it, we've seen that, right? So number one, it is up to you and me. It is up to you to do something with the measure of faith you've been given. Two, this measure of faith can increase, if you can do something with it, it means can increase. Isn't that another good news? And three, you are the one who increases it, you're the one, not God. You can pray. I know prayer is, is just communicating with God, so it should be 100% part of our lives. It should not be something you do only in your prayer closet. It's not, it shouldn't be something you do only when you start your prayer by, oh Father God, and you end by in the name of Jesus. Prayer is your communication with God, it should be all the time. But even, even, even so, it's not in prayer that you get more faith. The word tells us so, you'll see. It says, you already have it, you already have faith, the word says you already have faith. And you move mountains with your faith when you exercise it by praying, by, by, sorry, not by praying, by speaking, by telling to the mountain, move. So we, we saw that, remember, last week in our study of praise and worship? Respond to the revelation, answer the revelation, do something with the revelation you have. The revelation demands the response. So the faith God gave you, the word that you've heard, it demands a, a response, a reaction from, from you. This is how it works, it's a virtue circle. And God furnishes the means whereby faith can be increased, it is the word. So just like your natural body, you know, you, you have, um, you, you eat breakfast in the morning, you have to eat lunch, you have to eat, why? Because if you don't do this, your body gets weak and you die. Well, the same way, if you don't feed what God gave you, that spirit of faith He gave you is gonna die, it's not gonna disappear, it's just gonna be, become ineffective. Period. Revive it, revive it, feed it. And the way to feed it is, faith comes by hearing the word. So put your eyes into, because you know, hearing the word, it's also, it's God speaking the word to you. So as you read His word, you, you, and we talked about it also last week, not necessarily your body, but you and your spirit, person, you hear what God is telling you as you read the word. It's also very good to read it out loud, so that way your body can hear it too, even more, right? This is the way to feed your mountain-moving faith and get strong, just like you make your body strong. And where do I have this? Yes, Kenneth Hagan, he, he wrote that, he says, you know, you see sometimes very strong and big people, and they're not even able to lift anything really. You think, oh, you're so big, your muscles are so strong, pick up that desk over there, and they're like, ooh, ooh, ooh. And you see a tiny, especially those martial arts people, you know, the Asian people, that's so, such a good example, because they are, they have a smaller build than, than other people. And yet, they can pick up anything, it's crazy. Why? Because they've been practicing and practicing since they were young, in, in, in their, in their centers and temples, and they practice and they do the moves again, and they do the moves again, and, and they don't, they don't think, oh, those moves are too simple, they're beneath me. I should be able to do more. No, they do the same moves again and again and again, and they practice it, not thinking it's beneath them, not belil, belil, haha, that's a hard word. Beliling themselves for doing the simple moves, but they keep on doing the same thing and they grow, they built on those simple moves. And then boom, they can lift up cars if they want to. Why? Because they feed, they feed their physical muscle, the same way we should feed our spirit of faith. But you know what, 2 Corinthians 3, can we read that, 2 Corinthians 3, verse 5 and 6? Because there is one way that can be a deception for feeding your spirit of faith. So 2 Corinthians 3, verse 5, and, yeah, good. "Not that we are sufficient of ourselves to think of anything as, as being from ourselves, but our sufficiency is from God, who also made us sufficient as ministers of the new covenant, not of the letter, but of the Spirit. For the letter kills, but the Spirit gives life." If all you do is reading the word as a religious manner, in a religious manner, as a tradition, that is not feeding your faith. What feeds your faith? You read the word with the life of the Spirit coming from the word, through you, coming out of you. You need to do something with it. Look back to verse three, what does it mean, the, the letter kills and the Spirit gives life? Verse three, clearly, you are a letter or an epistle of Christ ministered by us. You are written not with ink, but by the spirit of the living God, not on tablets of stone, but on tablets of flesh, that is, of the heart. When it says flesh, doesn't mean bodily, it means soft versus the hardness of the stone, not, not flesh versus spirit, but soft versus dead stone. That's what it means, the, the letter kills, it's just dead. I know my Bible by heart, I've read it, oh, in my life, oh, I probably read it 30 times, yes, since, since age six in my Sunday school, I've read the Bible through and through 30 times, oh yeah, what does it, what, what good does it do to you? If you don't let that word that you've read change you. Just like those Asian and, and martial art people, I do martial arts, I know, you know, you repeat the same moves over and over and over. And you might think it's stupid, I know the move. Well, let it change you, let it change your posture, let it change the way you, you carry your arm, let it change the way you align your body. That's in the natural example of martial art. Now, in the life-giving example of the word, take one word and literally one word. Let that one word change you. You're practicing and increasing your faith. It has to change your behavior and your character. This is how you practice faith. You have to use what you hear. You have to use it. This makes your faith grow. If not, it is called religion, religiosity and deception. And then you end up being so disappointed. And you also might end up, you and I, again, just as every time I say you, it's what I tell myself first before telling anybody else, right? You might end up being a poor example to the world of who God is. Because you've seen people like that and I've seen people like that before being born again. They have, they didn't take me away from God, but just the vision that I saw was not appealing. I'm like, why would I go to that God? I don't see any difference in them. I didn't see any difference in character, any difference in behavior. So what do you have? A dead letter written on hard stone. But when I met, in my, my first church, when I met people who were far from perfect, but the word of God was written in their life. They were soft enough that I could see, I could see it in their life, on their heart. I could see the difference with the little thing they knew because they were, they were teenagers. So you know, they were like, not willing to do everything the God's way. But the little thing they knew and they had decided to practice from their heart, I saw that, that drew me to God. That, so that is what practicing your faith is. This is where it starts. Faith in Romans 10, verse 8. Faith. Look at this. But, so, yeah. But what does it say? The word is near you in your mouth and in your heart. We're back to Mark 11. Say what you believe in your heart. Speak what's in your heart. The word is near you and it's near you. It's the Bible you have. And it, it is to be in your heart and come out of your mouth. So example of exercises of faith. Talk to your situation. Exercise Jesus' authority. Pray with faith versus begging, you know, or feeling unworthy when you, when you ask for something. Or always have to, always having to say, sorry, Lord. Why do you always have to say, sorry, Lord? All the time? If you do something wrong, the second you do the wrong thing, oh, oh, forgive me, God. And you know he does. So don't be like, sorry, 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 sorry. No, that's exercising faith as well. Because God says in 1 John that if you confess your sin, he is faithful and just to forgive you and cleanse you from any iniquities. Boom, done. Exercise your faith. If you do something wrong, exercise your faith. Lord, I receive your forgiveness. Thank you for cleansing me. I was wrong in the past. One second ago, I was wrong, but I receive your forgiveness. And now I'm acting the right way and I'm completely forgiven. This is exercising your faith as well, right? So faith, speak to your situation. Like you have a dream. I had a dream to come to the United States. I kept on saying, one day I'll be in the United States. One day I'll be there. Oh, I will be there. And actually, I am taking, what every step I take, take is leading me closer to me actually putting my, my feet, physical feet on American ground. I will go to Bible school. Actually, I am going to Bible school because I'm filling out my application and thank you, Lord. It is your will for my life, so it is done. Right? Speak to your situation. You need finances? Speak. Oh, my, thank you, Father, because my finances are yours. I surrender everything to you. This area is completely yours. I do what you tell me to do. I spend what you tell me to spend. I save what you tell me to save. I work for what you tell me to work. And I thank you, Father, because my bank account is flourishing and it's going so, so well. Speak to your situation. Exercise your authority in Jesus' name. Sickness in the name of Jesus, get out of here. Do what the word tells you to do. It is in your heart, right? Because it should, because you should not be a dead letter. You should be alive by the spirit. Now speak it. Exercise your faith. So one, you get the word because this is where faith comes from. Two, you exercise it. I can't emphasize it enough, right? Because we need to hear it over and over because we have so many opportunities in life to not do it. You and me and everyone on earth, we have opportunities to just go like, okay, okay, just this time, just this time, I'm just gonna go with the flow. There is a right way to go with God's flow and a wrong way to go with the world's flow. Right? So we have to hear it over and over. Paul said, I repeat myself because it's good. Because you, faith comes by hearing and 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 hearing the word of God. So that's what we said, that's what we do. Now let's look at the next chapter. We're gonna, I'm gonna, I will have to give you a lot of verses, not be able to put all of them up there. So you can actually write them down or maybe Tiffany, if you want to type the references? Because you know what? Faith is measurable. You, some people say you either have faith or you don't. Well, thank you very much because obviously if I have the wrong results according to what you're telling me, if I have the, if, if I don't have faith results, it means I don't have faith at all. So why bother? You know, too, too bad for me. Well, no, this is not scriptural. It is not. God, we read it. He gave you a measure of faith and it's up to you to make it grow. But you know what? You can actually, you, you can measure your faith. So be encouraged, not in the wrong way. Don't measure it the wrong way, thinking I don't have enough. Measure it thinking, wow, I already have that, right? So for instance, so I'm just gonna, whatever you can put on the screen, put it. And if not, because I'm gonna read it. Luke 12, chapter 28. Jesus talk about little faith. He says, if then God clothes, yeah, clothes the grass, which is today in the field and tomorrow is cast into the oven, how much more will he clothe you? Oh, you people of little faith. Matthew 6:30, he also says little faith, oh, you, a little faith. Matthew 14, verse 31, he says, oh, you of little faith. Don't feel bad because God says, because Jesus says you of little faith. It still means you do have faith, right? You have, you have what it takes to make it grow. But Jesus was encouraging them, saying, hey, you're, you do have faith. For now, it's just little. But hey, come on, people. Don't you see that God? And then he gives those examples, meaning, don't you see it can grow? And Matthew, chapter 8, then Jesus was talking to the centurion and he said, great faith. Right? So obviously God can measure faith. If God can measure faith, we can measure faith. We know. So we've seen a person's faith can be little or great. Let's see, again, I'm gonna give you verses, just references. Other qualification for faith. Romans 4, verse 19. Romans 4, verse 19, it says, and being not weak in faith. So obviously, obviously you can be weak in faith. If you, and if you can not be weak in faith, means you can be strong in faith, right? So you can have a little faith, a great faith, a weak faith, faith, a strong faith. Romans 4:20 tells us, it's right after that verse, not being weak in faith. And at the end of the verse 20, it says, but was strong in faith. So faith is measurable. It can also be rich, full or perfect. We see that in James 2, verse 5. It says, hearken, my beloved brethren, has not God chosen the poor of this world rich in faith? You can be full of faith. Acts 6, verse 5. Acts, chapter 6, verse 5. Full of faith and of the Holy Spirit. James 2, verse 22, you could have also perfect faith. James 2, verse 22. By works was faith made perfect. And that verse is awesome because it's that, by works. Work your faith out. Work it out, right? So you can have also a growing faith in 2 Thessalonians 1, verse 3. 2 Thessalonians 1, verse 3. So we, your faith can be weak, strong, little, great, rich, poor, growing, full, perfect. Perfect meaning accomplished, accomplished faith. You can have also in 1 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 5, unfeigned faith, genuine faith, sincere faith. In 1 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 19, you can have a shipwrecked faith. Meaning you were there, something happened, you lost sight of what you knew was true. And all of a sudden, your ability to use your faith went doesn't mean it can go back up. It can go back up because it is the gift of God. It is the gift of God. So pick up your hearts. Pick up your hearts and pick up your faith. And if you don't have anything to pick up because you're already good, well, woo, let's keep on going. Keep on going and sing a little louder about it, right? Because it's good news. And in 1 John 5, verse 4, you can have an overcoming faith, overcoming faith. Wow. And so the, the word teaches us that we are to build our doctrines. Anything that we believe, meaning anything we put our trust in has to be, our trust has to come from the mouth of two or three witnesses. Meaning you don't take one verse, boom, and then create a whole doctrine on it or build your life about one verse. Even if it's the word of God, God, in his very, the same word, God tells us, don't do that. You need to. Because again, we are imperfect, so we interpret things the wrong way sometimes, right? Well, guess what? How many examples? I don't know how many references Pastor Tiffany was able to type for you guys, but I gave you there at least 10 examples. So I think it's safe to put our trust on the fact that our faith is able to grow and we can measure it. And you should constantly be growing your faith, right? It should be a daily exercise. And we have many examples of great men of faith. For instance, there is one called George Mueller. He, it was a long, long time ago when there was no radio, no, no internet, of course, if there were no even, not even radios, no publication that people could read, you know, no newsletter. But God gave him a mission. It was to take care of orphaned children. And he was not a pastor, so he could not take up offerings or anything. So guess what? He had to believe God and only God for the means to take care of these, these kids. So many things to do. Well, he, because it was God's mission for him, guess what? The orphans showed up. They came. And soon he had 2,500 children he was supposed to take care of on his own with no support and no means to get any, or no natural means to get support. So what did he do? He just put his faith in God. He said, Lord, that was, that's your mission for me. You provide, guess, the results. So at the beginning, it was so very hard to just believe for, for one child to be taken care of. At the end of his life, at the end of his mission, he was able to believe for $7,500 of that time. I don't really, I don't remember what year he was, but making the, the conversion, guess how much it would be today? He had to believe for 30 to 35 millions. And he did. He just, because he exercised the faith that was in his heart, that was alive and not dead tradition. Guess what? He saw the results. Not, not by started at 30,000 million, oh, 30 million dollars. He didn't start there. That would have been foolish and pride. He started where he was supposed to start. Just like those martial art moves. He started with this, with the simple things and he just, he just kept on repeating the same moves over and over again. And the same moves gave him results that were bigger and bigger and bigger. Another, oh yeah, he was 93 years old when, when he, he was done. And he said, when I first started praying and believing God, which means exercising his faith, it took all the faith I had to believe God for $1. But after feeding and exercising my faith daily for 50 years, I could believe God for $1 million just as easily as I did for my first, for my first dollar 50 years ago. So the thing is, he was step one, feeding his faith. He, he said that he always began his day by reading the word even before feeding his body with breakfast. So it doesn't mean, again, do not turn it. Make it a religious tradition and a recipe. And it's something I've said several times. There is no recipe in God. There are principles. The principle here is priority, priority. He put the word and, and he put practicing step one above everything else. Hearing the word. Doesn't mean that if you eat breakfast before reading your Bible or eat breakfast as you read your Bible, that it's, it's, oh, I messed up the recipe. No, no recipe, a principle. Play, give the word of God the place of honor in your life. Give your relationship with God the place of honor in your life. And then that you would be doing step one. Feeding, hearing the word of God. Feeding your faith, not out of tradition, but with the spirit of God. And that then leads you to a change of behavior and a change of character and develop, developing your character. Smith Swigelforth did the same thing. He would constantly, he would never leave his house without the word because he was giving the word the place of honor. F. Buthard, he said, most Christians feed their bodies three hot meals a day, but yet they give their spirit a cold snack once a week. And we know that we would die if we would do this in the, if we were to do this in the natural. So people who pray God, oh, God, give me faith. Sorry, this is why it does not work because it's not the way it's supposed to work. It is not the principle on which faith is based. You already have it. God did it. How can he answer your prayer when he already did it? So you can keep on saying, God, give me faith, God, give me faith, with the most sincere heart. I'm not making fun. With the most sincere heart, you can be, God, give me faith, God, give me faith. If you don't have an ear to hear him say, but I did. My child, you already have everything you need. Let me show you what to do with it now. Let me lead you by the hand. But you must do something as I lead you. You must grow and become, and become the men of faith I know you are. If you don't hear because you're too stuck in your tradition, God, give me faith, God, give me faith. God cannot answer your prayer because he already has. He gave you faith. And because he cannot do anything beyond that, because it's up to you to grow it. So faith does not come by praying. It come by what did we say? Step one? Feeding your, your faith by the word. You gotta know what to stand on before you can stand upon it, right? So you gotta know the word of God. And on top of that, when you, as you get to know the word of God, it fuels you, it infuses you with that energy and that spark to practice it. You are feeding your faith. Now that you have the spark to practice, practice. Speak. Let the faith change the way you behave. Let that, that faith, that revelation you got from God, let it change the, your, your character. Let it develop you. Let it change the way you see things around. the, your, your character. Let it develop you. Let it change the way you see things around you. Right? This is the way we do. And you know the word, the, the verse that says that without faith, it is impossible to please him? Well, if we had to do something in order to have faith, it means we could mess up. And God demanding from us to not mess up on that would be very unfair of him. He says, you can't, you cannot please me as long as you don't have faith. And if you mess up, and if you don't know how to get faith, well, you'll never please me. That would be so unfair. We could point the finger at him, saying, yay. You didn't give me the means to have faith. How, how do you, how, how can you request from me that I please you if I don't have the means to please you? But our God is not unfair. That's another proof that you do have faith. You do have faith. Because he loved you so much that he gave his only son so that you would be saved. So you please him. He, he loves you. You have faith. He had faith that you would put your faith in that sacrifice to be saved. If God, if God didn't, didn't have faith in that, he wouldn't have come. You know? So you do have faith. Know that. But it is your responsibility to grow it. It is your responsibility to exercise it. And I'm trying to finish it super quick in, yeah, I can do this. Step two, the, the growing, the, the exercising part of the growing, the exercising part. You know the key? And I told you with my martial art example? Start where you are. Do not try to imitate Kenneth Hagan or, um, Mueller, then we talked about, by thinking, oh, yes, then I'm gonna believe for, maybe you won't believe for $30 million. Yes, indeed. But maybe you wanna believe for $2,000, uh, because you want to, uh, uh, bring your wife, uh, on the honeymoon you nev, never had. How good, how wonderful is the intention behind that? It is beautiful. You are right to want to, to give your wife the honeymoon you never had. You are right. Doesn't mean that you can do it right now with your faith. Because you never, ever believed God for strengthening, give you the strength during the day, for instance. You, you don't know God that way. You don't know he gives you the strength through the day. You don't know God, you don't know that when you surrender to him, he can give you the strength to not be angry and not let your anger come out of your mouth, but to be peaceful. You never surrendered to him in that sense. But all of a sudden, even to, you want $2,000. Start where you are. Let faith, let what you know, the revelation you have of God, change you from the beginning. Change your character, develop it, change your behavior with people. Starts, start believing, even if you're not able to not be angry. Start saying it. I thank you, Lord, because I am not an angry person, because you know what? That's the truth. That's the truth. God did not make you angry. He didn't give you a spirit of fear. He didn't give you a spirit of anger either. He gave you a spirit of, of peace and of love and of a sound mind. So you, you start saying the truth, as we said at the beginning, line up your speaking on God's talk. Thank you, Lord. I am a, I'm, I'm peaceful and I'm a composed person. And I don't get angry. I'm not mean with people, because I love them. And I don't, I do not wish them any harm, and especially if the harm, the harm comes from me. I thank you. Every day you say that, and every time when you get still, still angry, as we said, immediately, because you have faith in 1 John, oh, Father, I'm sorry. I just did it again. Thank you for cleansing me. Thank you that you forgive me. Thank you, Father, that you also helped me, um, um, apologizing to those people and receiving their for, forgiveness. Thank you, Father, and I'm not that person. I am not that person. Start where you are. Start where you are. You know what? And 20 plus years ago, my, for the first act of faith I can remember with money was believing God for $60 of spending money, which means I already had all my bases cover, covered. And I just, I, it was, it was my faith. That was all I had. All the faith I had, I put it in believing God for $60. You know what? Four years ago, I believed God for $15,000 every year, because I could not, and even more, actually, maybe 20,000, because I was not allowed to work in this country, and I had to believe God for food, rent, tuition money, um, gas money, entrance, phone, everything. I could not have done that 20 years ago. But if four years ago, I was still, I was still believing God for my, my 50, if I had not done anything in between, four years ago, I would still be believing God for $50, and I would not be in, in front of you today. Not because it wasn't God's plan, but because I didn't do anything with what he gave me. So start where you are, and don't feel bad. Don't feel bad. Don't measure yourself to others. This is pride, guys. That's pride. What do we do with pride? Do we like it? Do we, do we? No. Pride is not who you are. Pride is what you do. So if you don't like what you do, kick it out. Kick it out of your life. Again, have faith in the fact it's not who you are. And, um, yeah, start right where you are, and when you're praying for people or, um, for yourself, find something you can agree on. So in order for you to start where you are, if you can't believe for casting devils out of people, or raising people from the dead, nobody asks you to, to perform. Don't do that. If you don't agree, if you're not able to agree fully on that, yet, yet is the keyword, don't go with it, because you're gonna set yourself up for failure. Start with the beginning, as I said, a change of character, spirit of peace. Or when you have a cold, put your faith in the fact that that cold is gonna go away, is gonna go away very quick, quicker than usual. And then you put your faith on, on the fact that you're not gonna get a cold at all. And then you put the fa, your faith on the fact that when you lay hands on somebody who has a cold, if they receive what you're saying, boom, the cold will go. Start where you are, find somewhere, find something you can agree on for yourself, between you and God. And then when you pray for people, between you and them, what, what are they at in their faith? Don't pray for them to be completely out of debt and rich if, if they can't handle it. Right? Don't pray for them to be healed instant, in, immediately in front of you if their faith is in the fact that the doctor is, are actually going to perform a successful surgery. It's very good. It is faith. Successful surgery, that is faith, and it is good. It is good. So start where you are. And do according to your faith, let it be done. So this is where we, we stop. Phew, I ran through it, but it was so good. I hope you, you, you really, um, got the, those keys, right? You do have faith, and that's the good news. You do have it. You're not a lost child. You have faith. And you're a responsible person, so do something with it. And in order for you to do something with it, read the word and practice the word. Let the word be alive in you, not a dead, dead religious pride ink letter. But do it. Let the word change you. Start on the beginning by you. Let him change you. And we do have a prayer request. Sheri, oh, you're having surgery on your arm tomorrow. Okay, awesome. See, an example. Let's put our faith together on the fact that that surgery is gonna go smoothly. A textbook surgery, a super quick recovery, no complication, and everything taken care of. See? This is faith. So let's do that. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Father. In the name of Jesus, we know that you promised that all things work together for good for those who love you. And are called according to your good purpose. We are called, you called every one of us. So thank you, Lord. Thank you that we know that everything is going to work together for good for Sheri. Thank you, Father. It's as easy as that. We know you're good. We put, we put our trust in that truth. And we, we let your, the result of our faith in you flow through our lives. Let us be, let Sheri, through this successful surgery and quick recovery, let it be a witness, a testimony, an, an epistle to the world for Christ. In the name of Jesus, amen. Amen. So guys, I'll see you tomorrow. Pastor will be back tomorrow. And till the end of the week, we're studying faith and how to practice it, and you see, you've seen how deep it is, but also how simple. God is good. He loves you. He has empowered you. You're able. That's the good news. Pick up your heart, and let's run with joy. Bye-bye.